Okay. First item on the agenda for this work session is the retiring medical plan analysis. I know we have Michelle in us here?
Yes.
Luke, thanks.
Good morning.
Good morning.
This is Al Winters, our actuary from CBIZ. I'm going to allow him to take the lead and introduce what we've done into this study.
Introduce yourself and...
Yes, I'm going to allow him to take the lead and introduce.
Good morning, everybody. My name is Alvin Winters. I am an actuary with CBIZ Retirement Plan Services, currently serving as the actuary for the retiring medical plan. Basically, what that entails is I lead a calculation to determine the annual funding needs of the retiring medical plan and also the financial statement accounting regarding the retiring medical plan. What I'd like to talk about a little bit this morning, then, does everybody have a copy of the presentation? Because if not, I have extra copies. Yep? If anybody needs a copy, let me know. I have extra copies with me.
We're good.
He's got, yeah. Thank you. So just an overall agenda on page one was want to talk about the current plan overview and the current funded status.
Let me interrupt you real quick. Is this going to go on the big screen at all?
No, not this presentation.
Just wanted to make sure. Thanks.
And then talk about potential methods to kind of cap increases in the county's costs and what the associated reductions in their retiring medical liability would entail. And then also look at what levers are available to influence costs for new hires, not looking at current participants or retirees. So just flipping over to page two, giving a brief overview of what the county retiring medical plan looks like. Eligible employees can retire and maintain the county's medical plan. And when they do retire, if they meet the eligibility requirements, the county covers eighty-four percent of the premium for single retirees and covers seventy-five percent of the premium for spousal coverage. In general, eligible retirees include county employees who retire under the county pension system, and that can happen as early as age fifty-five with five years of service, or at any age with twenty-five years of service. Eligible employees who aren't under the county's retirement system generally can get retiring medical if they retired age sixty-two with ten years of service. The interesting fact here, though, and one of the key components about looking at retiring medical liabilities and costs, is the fact that the premium for active employees may not fully cover the cost of pre-sixty-five retirees. So even though you say we're covering eighty-four percent of the premium for a single retiree who's pre-sixty-five, your true cost isn't necessarily eighty-four percent of the premium. And I can illustrate why that is on page three. There's a graph here that shows medical costs weighting by age. And you'll see that as age goes up, the relative weighting of medical costs go up as well. And this is from a study from the Society of Actuaries in 2013. And so these are relative weights, not necessarily costs. And so the idea here is if the medical cost for a forty-year-old is one, then if you get out past age sixty, those costs are going to be double what the costs are at age forty. And so in general, the premium that you charge is based off of your total active population, which has an average age of about forty-six, whereas the average age for your pre-sixty-five retirees is actually sixty. And so you think that, you know, you're covering just eighty-four percent of the cost, but your true cost is much higher. And that differential between the premium amount and the cost for pre-sixty-five retirees is called the implicit subsidy, because in effect, you're offering an enhancement above just staying in the plan. There's a subsidy there where the active employees are kind of subsidizing the retirees. And the accounting standards require you to book a liability for that subsidy because you're giving something to the retirees, both in the direct subsidy, i.e. in the amount of the premium that you cover, but also in the value of medical coverage above and beyond that premium. And it's a significant portion of the liability for pre-sixty-five retirees. Flipping over to page four, we have where the plan currently stands on a funded status basis at the last valuation that we did as of seven one sixteen. At that point in time, the plan had assets a little over nineteen point one million dollars, and the total liability was about forty-three point two million dollars and pretty evenly split between current retirees and active employees, with active employees having a liability of about twenty-one point eight million dollars and current retirees having a liability of twenty-one point four million dollars. A couple of key assumptions revolving around that, and the most important one is the interest rate used to determine that liability. So what we do is we look at the projected payout of all expected cash flows and costs for the retirees and active employees today, based off when we think they're going to retire, how long we think they're going to live, and then we discount that back at an assumed investment rate. And that assumed investment rate underlying the plan's assets right now is a seven point two five percent rate of return. If you have a lower interest rate there, the higher the liability, and a higher interest rate, the lower the liability. The key to kind of keep in mind here is that prior to fiscal year eighteen, the county has not had to book this unfunded liability on its balance sheet. But starting in fiscal year eighteen, at the end of fiscal year eighteen, a new government accounting standard called GASB-75 will take effect, and the county will be required, like all other governments, to book the unfunded liability on its balance sheet. This information was previously available in the financial notes, just not on the balance sheet itself. So it's not going to be a surprise to creditors, but they will now see it on the balance sheet. So this full unfunded liability, the difference between the forty-three point two million and the nineteen point one million dollars in assets, will show on the, will show on the balance sheet. So the next step, then, is to kind of take a look at what composes that forty-three point two million dollar liability and what kind of comprises it, because then you can kind of get an understanding of where your levers are. If we look at the total direct subsidy, i.e. if we just said the true cost of coverage was the premium amount and the county's costs were that eighty-four percent of the premium or seventy-five percent of the premium for spousal coverage, what's that present value today at today's cost, assuming, you know, we lived in some type of utopia where there were no increases in medical costs or even in core inflation? If you just locked yourself in at today's direct subsidy, that liability would be nineteen point three million dollars and pretty close to what the plan's assets are. If we add on, though, that implicit subsidy component, i.e. the difference between what the premium is and the theoretical true cost of pre-sixty-five retiree coverage, that adds four point nine million dollars to the liability. If we just add on a component for core inflation, assuming that inflation in the future would be about two and a half percent, that would add another six point nine million dollars to the liability. And then the biggest component of the increase to the forty-three point two million is actually excess medical inflation costs. We currently assume that, you know, medical costs aren't going to grow with inflation, but rather they're going to grow faster, and that historically has been the fact by a wide margin. We actually do believe that medical costs will gradually come down at some point in time because they can't stay at their current percentage and then basically dwarf the entire economy. But we do think that they will continue to grow above inflation. Our current assumption is that medical costs for retirees will grow at a rate of around seven percent a year, gradually coming down to a rate of five percent. That difference between a five percent ultimate and core inflation adds twelve point one million dollars to the liability, and you wind up with a total liability then of forty-three point two million dollars. So we took a look at a couple of different things that, you know, if you change the plan, what would that do? Not necessarily advocating for any of these changes, but just saying, here's what changes would do so that way the council would be educated about what types of levers exist. One of the first things we looked at and said, well, what if we did just lock in at the current direct subsidy today and just said, you know, whatever we currently pay is a dollar amount, lock that in and tell retirees in the future, this is our, we'll contribute this much towards your costs. So if today, the current single employee premium is six forty-five, and the current county subsidy on a direct basis is five forty-two, we'd lock in at the five forty-two level and just cap it. And so then next year, if medical costs went up five percent, the total premium would be six seventy-seven, the county subsidy would still remain at five forty-two, but the retiree cost would increase to be one thirty-five to cover the difference. Another option, though, to take into account the fact that, well, okay, all things do kind of go up and not to ship the entire cost of future increases onto retirees, would be to say, we'll limit increases in the county's direct subsidy to something like core inflation or to look at it annually, depending on what your budget would wind up being. And so say there, if costs increased five percent, you would limit the county's increase to inflation of, say, two and a half percent. Under that type of scenario, the total cost would still go up to six seventy-seven, and the county's costs would increase from five forty-two to five fifty-five, and the retirees' costs would then go from one oh three to one twenty-two. Instead of trying to just core inflation, they could look at it on a budgetary basis, say, we can afford to go above core inflation this year, and maybe one year you couldn't go back, but it would give you a little bit more flexibility. And so we took a look at what it would look like if you made these types of changes, both to current retirees and current active participants, or just limiting it to future retirees. So current retirees would stay under the current system where the county covers all future excess medical inflation, and looked at it both ways. And we have those results on the next page. And so what we have here is the current actuary liability, current assets, what the funded percentage would be, and then we also have what the funded percentage is if we only looked at the direct subsidy amount. Because I do think sometimes when you talk about how much money does the county need to have set aside, prefunding that implicit subsidy, you're kind of already kind of paying that on a pay-as-you-go basis anyway through the active employees. I don't know if you necessarily want to get to a hundred percent target, including the implicit subsidy. I think a lot of times it makes sense to look at it without the implicit subsidy. But we looked at it, so you have the current plan at the forty-three point two million. If we went to just a fixed cap for all participants with no future increases, that would have a total liability of twenty-four point two million dollars, increase the plan's funded percentage from forty-four point three percent to seventy-eight point nine percent, and the direct subsidy percentage, you'd almost be fully funded at that point in time. If you went to a fixed cap for new retirees only, whereas current retirees had no change, but future retirees went to that just flat, here's a flat dollar amount that we're going to cover towards the cost of coverage, the actuary liability would go from forty-three point two million to just over thirty-two million, and the plan's funded percentage would increase from forty-four point three percent to fifty-nine point seven percent and go to seventy point six percent on a direct subsidy-only basis. If you said, well, we're going to have some type of increases, but it's going to be closer to inflation, not necessarily the full cost of this excess medical growth, the liability, and you applied that to all participants going forward, you'd have a liability decrease of forty-three point two million to thirty-one point two million, and the plan's funded percentage would increase from forty-four point six to sixty-one point four percent. If you only applied that to future retirees only, then that liability would go from forty-three point two to thirty-five point nine, and the plan's funded percentage would increase the smallest amount going from forty-four point three percent to fifty-three point two percent. All of these changes, depending upon when you would make them, if you made the, if a change was made in fiscal year eighteen, under the new accounting standards, any reduction in the liability is a direct immediate reduction in your periodic pension expense for that year. So you'd have a decline in your pension expense and your income statement the year the change was made. But this is kind of an idea of where the plan would be under different scenarios as far as the total unfunded liability and funded percentage under the new accounting standards. Before I move on to taking a look at changes in the new hire eligibility rate, are there any questions here about these components that I can answer? Should I just keep going on?
I have a couple of questions.
Yeah.
What is a comfortable percentage for being funded? I know when we, I would go to a couple bond rating agencies, and they were actually, I thought, happy with our percentage that we were funded in OPEB already, and surprised, I guess, some counties aren't even, are zero percent funded. So, I mean, is a forty-four percent compared to a seventy-eight percent? I mean, are we hurting ourselves by being at forty-four percent?
I think you're absolutely right. So it's a different world than, say, the pension world, where generally creditors want to see pension plans funded and funded well, like around like eighty percent for a pension plan is like the ideal. For retiring medical plans, because in the corporate world, it's very difficult to fund a retiring medical plan, the tax treatment and the tax favorable trusts that are available to corporations to fund retiring medical benefits, the vast majority of private sector retiring medical plans are unfunded completely. In addition, on the governmental side, most plans are unfunded. We are seeing, because of the new accounting standard that's coming into play for fiscal year eighteen, where the entire unfunded balance sheet or unfunded liability has to drop on the balance sheet, we're seeing municipalities and governments starting to pursue prefunding. I would say that you guys are way ahead of the curve and are probably are in a leadership position as far as it comes to prefunding our retiring medical obligations. So I think that would be consistent with what the creditors found. I think, that being said, to avoid some type of intergenerational transfer of taxes from one group of taxpayers to another, your long-term goal would still try to, I think, be, ultimately, you'd want to be, you know, eighty to a hundred percent funded on that direct subsidy basis. You know, that's the exact payout that you're going to, you're kind of covering for current retirees and pulling them in by the wrist. So I think ultimately, that's where you'd want to be. I think, that being said, I think the county's in a great position with where it's at so far and far ahead of its peers.
Okay. Thanks. The option that you suggested, with the two, fix the county direct subsidy to today's to today's dollar amount, and that's not, that's not really a viable option, is it?
Yes and no. And part of this isn't necessarily, like I said, to advocate for any one of these, but it's more educational, say, this is how much of your liability compose these other components. I think what is probably the more realistic solution is to say, we're going to shift away from, we're going to cover X percent of the premium, whatever it is, and move to something that's a little bit more transparent and easy to see and say, the retirees will cover this dollar amount, and then maybe revisit that. And you're obviously going to have to, there's going to be pressure to increase that regardless, because even if you go to a flat dollar, that's what you're going to do, for two, three, four years, maybe that holds, but each year, the pressure on retirees then builds, and they, you know, are going to advocate and fight for increases. Then you're going to build in something, the ad hoc increase. And then once you have a couple of ad hoc increases, it becomes part of the plan that people rely upon and comes back into liability anyway.
Right.
So it is there more for educational purposes than anything. I think the, you're going to have some type of increases on the, on the county share.
Any other questions?
All right. The other thing we then took a look at was, what about changing the eligibility requirements for new hires who come on? Now, one of the things to take into account there is that if you change benefits for new hires, it really doesn't do anything to the county's costs or the liabilities for one, at least in the short term. The liability itself is totally comprised just of current active employees and current retirees that are in the plan. And so we make no provision for new hires coming in because they haven't come in and earned any benefits under the plan. That being said, doesn't mean necessarily that you don't want to make changes there because the number of employers who offer retiring medical continues to dwindle. There are fewer and fewer employers who offer retiring medical benefit of any kind to new hires, so it does make some sense to make a change there. And it does gradually kind of slow the cost curve down, because if you can change the eligibility requirements for new hires, eventually when they fully comprise the population, then you gradually lowered the cost of the plan. And right now, active employees accrue, you know, each year of service adds about one point seven million dollars to the county's liability, which is about seven point three percent of compensation. And so we took a look at it and saying, well, okay, what would it be if we changed the eligibility requirements for new hires? How much, how much play would that have to that cost rate and what would it do for just new hires? And so we have that on page nine. And so the current plan is what the cost of the year of service is for the current active population at seven point three percent. We looked at making changes to the eligibility for retiring medical, changing it to Social Security Normal Retirement Age plus ten years of service, Social Security Normal Retirement Age plus twenty years of service.
That's page, that's page eight, just so anybody could still follow. That's the bottom of page eight?
Yep. And then pension eligibility and twenty years of service, that's on, the results of that are on page nine. And so the current plan is sitting there at seven point three percent cost rate. If you change it to Social Security Normal Retirement Age plus ten years of service, that would lower the cost rate for new hires down to three percent. Social Security Normal Retirement Age plus twenty years of service would have a cost rate of two point one percent, and twenty years of service would have a cost rate of two point nine percent. And the major reason for these pretty dramatic shifts in the cost rate is that it's basically not having people be eligible for pre-sixty-five retiring medical coverage then. They're basically getting coverage post-sixty-five only, where you don't have that implicit subsidy, and that's mainly then they're just getting that Medicare supplemental plan.
So if someone retires sixty-three, what happens?
So if they retired at sixty-three and chose to retire at sixty-three, they would still get their pension benefits, but they would not get any retiring medical benefits. They would have to stick around until they made, until Social Security Normal Retirement Age. So that does have some potential negative implications, too, to think about from an HR perspective, is that if you push that stick out too far and people then wind up maybe working past, you know, if you wind up having, you get a population that gets to be kind of top-weighted towards an older population, you kind of lose the ability to manage your workforce if they can't afford to retire.
So you're eliminating the implicit subsidy? Is that what that...
You are. You're definitely eliminating any implicit subsidy, and you're also just not providing even the direct subsidy portion at that point in time. It's almost a wipeout of the implicit subsidy.
Joe?
So a few years ago, the county offered an early retirement to do a refund reduction in force. So if you went with something like this, that would have had an effect on that, right? That wouldn't have, that wouldn't have worked so well, right?
Yeah, I mean, I think if you're doing like a, if you are pushing people into retiring early and then giving them retiring medical coverage as part of that window, I think taken into account that retiree cost plus that implicit subsidy is important.
In all your analysis, I guess, one of my questions, did you study what the cost would be to hire and train new employees if you were losing trained, skilled workforce that had been here for a long time because they weren't happy with their benefits anymore? Was there any studies done on what that would cost?
Yeah, because I don't think at this point in time, at least as part of this engagement, I don't know, I'll speak to the work that we did, it was really just kind of like a preliminary thing. And light of GASB-75 coming online, we're going to have to record that full difference between the nineteen point one million and the forty-three point two million, just that full portion of the liability coming under the balance sheet. It was just kind of a beginning step to kind of take a look at what the different components are of that liability. So no, we did not look at that.
Well, I know a year or so ago, there were some changes with some retiree health benefits as far as prescriptions go, and, you know, there was a lot of disappointment amongst current employees, wondering what was going to happen to them in the future. So that's what I was getting at question.
How about our neighboring, neighboring counties or counties in Maryland as far as eligibility requirements? Do many of them follow the Social Security Retirement Age plus ten years or twenty years, or are they pretty much you're in as soon as you're hired?
It's a hodgepodge. I don't know if you can really say there is a consensus there. Most municipalities and local governments start with whatever their pension eligibility is, because for the most part, they set up a retiring medical plan at the same time they set up a pension plan, and started, I guess, okay, we're going to plant the flag where the pension eligibility is. And then maybe, you know, the pension eligibility standards kind of over the last thirty years tended to be less and less. So like one point back in the seventies and early eighties, like you had to be vested in a benefit, you would have to stick around for like twenty years, and that stuff had kind of phased away. But retiring medical eligibility kind of stuck with the pension plan, and then you get, well, if somebody's only here for less than ten years, we want to give them retiring medical and take that full benefit. I think people have understood how much more valuable retiring medical is in some instances compared to a pension benefit for short service employees. And so we've seen changes and people move away, maybe not full Social Security Normal Retirement Age, but we've seen other limitations. Some employers have actually eliminated post-sixty-five coverage. Some employers have eliminated pre-sixty-five coverage or placed other types of standards on it.
So it's kind of all over the board?
It's definitely all over the board, fit to each kind of local, you know, the budget challenges for each tax jurisdiction that kind of dictate more so, I've seen than anything else.
I just don't want to put ourselves in a position where we're not attracted to, you know, finding good employees.
Yeah, and I think if you, if this exercise moves further forward, I think that is something to kind of take a look at. Take a look at both the neighboring governments, regional and private employers and kind of try to pull there and see what's going on. You know, because none of this stuff is meant at this point in time to be, here's a solution or a proposal, it's kind of beginning stage, here's different directions you would have flexibility in going.
Most people that work for local governments like Wycomico, Salisbury, even state of Maryland, they, they do it for the benefits. Sometimes it's not the pay, they do it for the benefits. So like Councilman Matt Holloway said, it may make future hiring pool less attractive. So that's just something we need to consider.
Some of your eligibility always, most of your eligibility always references sixty-five, but some of the, depending on the age, when the person was born, couldn't, can't it be sixty-seven as well? Does that come into play here?
Yeah, so when we say Social Security Normal Retirement Age, that is the age-graded basis where for people, you know, my, it's sixty-six for me, but for people younger than me, it's going to grade down to an ultimate age of sixty-seven, so it would tie into that.
So do you take that into account on your long-term?
Yeah, so we looked at like the current population and calculated what Social Security Normal Retirement Age would be for most employees. For most of your current, to the average right now for the current population at sixty-six, gradually over time, it would go to sixty-seven and dial that back a little bit even further.
Any other questions? Did you want to add anything, Michelle?
I've got one question. When we had the, and maybe Wayne can answer this, because you're the one that made the statement. When we had the problem with the prescription and we had the meeting at the Civic Center, Wayne, you said they were going to look at a policy to fill the donut hole for the retirees. Was there anything ever done with that?
No. Currently, Human Resources has no, had no complaints, and it's kind of industry standard with that donut hole.
You haven't had any complaints about retirees' prescriptions?
No. No, we haven't. We have not had no complaints.
Really?
No.
Well, they just must be complaining.
They have not complained to Human Resources. And we just had a meeting with our healthcare provider, and Wayne was at that meeting, and what's going on with prescriptions is currently universal, it's going on everywhere. The prescription costs are continuously going up, and they were, they had a whole presentation on it. It's not isolated to here.
I know that night, you know, due into the concerns, Wayne, you said that we would look at, that you would look at some policy that would possibly fill that void, and I was wondering if...
The, the, the actual experience, and I did make that statement, out of, what, we have a hundred and forty-four retirees, Michelle, we have about five people who are on...
Some other type of prescription.
Well, they, yeah, they, they are taking quite a bit of medication. So out of a hundred and forty-four retirees, we have five who find that our, that the prescription coverage through United Health isn't what they would like to have. I don't, I don't see that as, as a big problem, to be honest with you. I think that by and large, I think I said that... large, I think I said that night, that my wife is, is on this same plan, and her coverages are just fine. She has to take arthritis medication, RA medication. Her coverages are quite good. So I think for the majority of the existing retirees, the coverage that has been offered is quite adequate. You're, you're, even, even with our active employee plan, you're going to find employees who want to take certain medications that aren't in the formulary. You, you, you can't, you can't come up with a prescription plan that's going to be satisfactory to one hundred percent of the medications that people want to take. There, there, there is also, and correct me if I'm wrong, Michelle, but with United Healthcare, there, there is a, there is an appeal process whereby if, if there is a medication that is not in their formulary and there is medical need for that re, for that prescription, you can, you can appeal. And if there's a medical need for it, it can be dispensed and covered by the plan. So this, this is an issue that, and, and Michelle's right, we just had an update with Care First. This, this entire issue with prescription costs and prescription coverages is not going to get better. It's going to get more and more challenging. And the reason that we wanted to present this to you today was just simply to set the stage for, look, the, these are the liabilities that are currently out there based on what we're doing right now. These are options that you could look at. We're not prescribing or promoting any one of these options. We're simply saying what, what you are seeing is that many, many jurisdictions around the country are tackling this OPEB issue because it's becoming unaffordable. And bear in mind that, that when we're looking at a property tax that, that's comprising a significant portion of our operating costs, and it's limited to two percent, I can guarantee you that medical costs are increasing far more rapidly than two percent annually. So it, it, it bears taking a hard look at in the out years, what, what is going to be, what's going to be affordable, given the county's financial structure, if you will. And to Larry's point, to go back to making this an attractive place for employees to want to work, it depends on what employees you're talking to. If, if people come to us for benefits, some of those people are coming to us for benefits because they need benefits, and they, and those people can drive the cost experience. You will recall that last budget year, we had a nine hundred thousand dollar increase in our health premium. That was driven by three?
Yes.
That was driven by?
Actually, a major six hundred of it was one.
Six hundred thousand of that was one individual. And can't go into who, why. But if, if you have a compensation package that is heavily skewed towards benefits, people are going to self-select. I would suggest to you that when we look at what we want our compensation package to look at, you have to look at the emerging workforce. Younger employees are far less concerned with retirement benefits and health benefits, and much more concerned with how much am I going to take home in my paycheck this week. But, but that gets us into an entirely different discussion. How do we want to manage our entire compensation plan? How much of it do we want to aim towards current compensation? How much of it do we want to aim towards health benefits, retirement benefits? And also understand, and this was taken into account with the actuarial calculations, we, we have a bow wave of people close to my age who are going to be retiring from the county. So I think this is something that's critically important for us to look at, to understand, and begin to think about what adjustments, if any, if any, we want to make in terms of our compensation structures and overall structure, and our post, post-employment structure.
You know, a lot of what you just said I can agree with, but you also, for the people that are here, have been here, there have been promises made. And you can't, I find it hard to support stepping back on that, to back, you know.
Nobody here is suggesting that we make those changes. What we're trying to do is to set the financial and actuarial stage for where we as a county are headed. And this county is, we're in the same boat that probably every other jurisdiction in the country is, every private employer in the country is. Healthcare and post-retirement healthcare is an, an, an emerging enormous issue because of the baby boomer generation. And it's not only that we have a lot of baby boomers who are retiring, they're living much longer, and medical advances are, are such that medical treatment extends life. It extends life, but it's expensive. So you're looking at an aging population with increasingly per capita increases in annual costs with regard to not only retirement, but also medical care. And, and, you know, we don't have a crystal ball, but I think we would be remiss if we didn't set the stage and say, this is something that we really need to begin, to take a close look at and understand, you know, how does this work for this particular county?
You made some interesting points and invalid points about the young, younger generation looking for a paycheck, how much money they can put in their wallet. But you'll see with those also, they'll probably go from job to job until they get the paycheck that they want. Do we want the high turnover? Do we want career employees? That's something to consider.
You had mentioned, going back to what Joe had asked, were the, were the individuals that complained about their coverage, the donut hole gap, were they made aware of the appeal process?
Yes.
Yes.
That were made aware of it, the people that complained?
Yes.
Absolutely.
Have you heard back from them on that appeal?
I've heard nothing from, it's been complete silence.
Did they appeal and?
Well, some chose to, some chose to get their own prescription coverage that worked better for them and their specific medications, while some did not sign up and only signed up for medical, and some went, went to our plan of these few, and we've heard no complaints. Because anybody that does, we attempt to assist them and we'll make calls and...
Adjusting it to, considering adjusting it to inflation, would you, would you do it to inflation, or would you do it to a particular consumer price index? Would a consumer price index better evaluate that, that particular category?
Yeah, generally when I talk about inflation, I, you would cap it to something like CPIU or W or even, there's an index now for, for Asian people, so you could tie it to any CPI index you wanted to.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, or you still could do it one of two ways, right? You could say, we're going to tie it to CPI inflation, or we're going to tie it to a, you know, however much revenues went up, you know, you tie it to your budget. So I think you have a lot of flexibility in how you tie those future increases.
Are we, first two things, I guess, what, what's the timeframe? When, I'm assuming that we're obviously going to be, have to be reviewing this to, if, if anything's going to be done, it would be done within the next year. And are we leaning towards a fixed cap? Are we leaning towards something based on inflation? Do we know where we're headed yet?
No, we don't.
We just got the information.
We just got the actuarial information to see what are the possibilities, what are the impacts for the county, and what are the impacts for retirees if we propose certain changes. It's just, this is essentially data mining at this point in time.
Now, if you're bringing in any new hire, new hires, new employees, are you going to forewarn them that there may be changes coming and that they may be part of that? Or are they automatically going to be, if it's changed in that, in that fashion, are they going to be exempt?
I think by law, the data the higher
Would, would establish that.
Establishes what their, what their benefits are.
All right. Just curious. Yeah. Any other questions from anyone? Mr. Winters, anything? We appreciate it.
Thanks, man. Thanks for having me.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Next item we have on the agenda is the contingency work session on the contingency transfer from Warwick Community College. Mr. Strausberg, I know that you're a part of this. I don't see anyone here from Warwick.
We had a communications gap, and Dr. Hui is in Worcester County at the moment, so...
At their meeting?
I have no idea. So I think you recall that when we made the initial transfer from contingency to Dr. Hui, that it was half of the projected shortfall. We told you at the time that we would wait until we got closer to the end of the fiscal year to come back and talk to you about the potential for funding the additional half from contingency, assuming that the fund would still support that transfer. The alternative, of course, is for that two hundred and twelve, I think it's two twelve four
Right.
To come out of the Warwick Reserve Fund, but in doing so, it reduces that fund perilously low. So we have right now remaining, as of today, in the county's contingency fund, three hundred twenty-nine thousand, I think nine hundred and seventy-five thousand. So we, we do have an adequate amount of money in the contingency fund to support this second transfer.
Questions?
The financial outlook there hasn't, I mean, there's not been some
No, I checked. No, I checked with Dr. Hui and, and, and the, and the need for the transfer. The reaction that I got from Dr. Hui was, probably needs it more now than he needed it when he made the first transfer. So it, it's, in his mind, it's still necessary and, and desired.
Is this funding for this current year?
Yes. It's to finish out this, it's to finish out this existing fiscal year, Larry.
Joe? And the budget message, you know, is about more funding for Warwick stated doing to a lower enrollment was one of the reasons. If, if the enrollment keeps going down, do we keep giving more money to, I mean, if that happens again next year, is that, I mean, do we keep paying more money to educate less people?
But this wasn't, this wasn't related to enrollment. This was specifically health, health related.
No, this was, this, this was driven by health.
Yeah, but I mean, it's still...
But the revenue's down because of enrollment. That's part of the problem.
Yeah, that's part of the problem.
The revenue for this coming year
Yeah.
Is projected to be down, not for the current year. So, so in the budget message, the twenty eighteen, the twenty eighteen budget, what Ray is saying that he's seeing a decline, two hits, well, three hits actually, a decline in enrollment, a, a cap on the amount by which he can increase credit hour fees, and they're still trying to, to sort out. And I believe they have some solutions for the, for the health costs.
Didn't the governor find more money in his budget for community colleges?
They're saying that, there was like eight hundred thousand, I think, that Mary Beth Carosa had stated in her report to us. I don't think it says how it's, how it's being separated.
Are they doing some kind of an actuary to study about reducing their benefits or changing their benefits?
I believe they are, Joe, yes. I believe they are doing that.
Have to take a look at that. I was trying to see. Okay. Any other questions in reference to the specific resolution? All right. Thank you, Wayne.
Thank you.
Mr. President, did you want that resolution to come back for consideration at the next meeting?
Yes, thank you. I, I, I might, I could ask council if they wanted to have an additional work session on it, but I think, you know, if there are any questions left, we could do it during the resolution. If you could, yeah, that'd be great. Thanks. Okay. Steve? I'm not going to send you away today.
Why don't you join us here if you'd like?
We're going to show a couple pictures of the experience.
Oh, good, okay, great, okay. Great, thanks.
Yeah, I know, Mr. President, thank you for having me and members of the council. I know this was not in the cards the last time I was here, but this is a highly anticipated
And we apologize.
Highly anticipated announcement now two weeks later, but appreciate the, the opportunity to be here. As you all well know, the Wycomico County is turning one hundred and fifty this year. And our department, along with the executive's office, has been working on some public celebrations to commemorate the one hundred and fifty year anniversary. I'm here just to give you some highlights of, of what we have planned and, and ask you to, to be part of that and participate. Most, the bulk of our activities are going to take place over two weekends, the first of which, you can go to the next, next slide, the first of which will take place at the Wycomico County Fair, which is the weekend of August eighteen through twenty. On Friday night of the county fair, the opening ceremony, the county is sponsoring a Jimmy Charles concert. He's a, a country act out of Nashville, but he's got roots on the eastern shore, so we're, we're pleased to have him as, as part of the kickoff for that weekend. And that's a free concert to the public. On the next day, Saturday, during the, the peak hours of the fair, at one fifty, to celebrate the one fifty, we're doing a parade of towns. We've gone to all the, the towns and municipality meetings, invited them to participate to celebrate their own history. So we'll have a parade through the county fair. And then we'll also have a historic village set up at the fair with static displays, talking about life in Wycomico County over the last hundred and fifty years. So that is the first major weekend that we have planned. The second weekend is the third weekend in September. That's in conjunction with the third Friday in downtown Salisbury. Several events that will be happening there, the, one of the highlights will be the unveiling of the improvements at the courthouse. And Greater Salisbury Committee, which is turning fifty this year, while we're turning one hundred and fifty, one of their gifts to the county will be to fund an uplighting of the courthouse. So that will be one of the highlights of that night on Friday night, September the fifteenth, which is the third Friday in Salisbury. That evening, we'll also be doing some historical tours downtown and kind of guided history tours. And the third Friday that, that weekend happens to be themed about the past and the future. So there'll be people dressed up and all sorts of different activities happening there. The following night, Greater Salisbury is sponsoring a one hundred and fifty gala, which will be held at Salisbury University. I'm sure you'll hear more about that. But the proceeds of that event are going to help fund the uplighting from September the fifteenth. So those are the two major weekends that we're planning publicly to, to get people involved. If you can go to the next slide, there's a couple of spinoff events. This past weekend, the Westside Historical Society, they have an annual heritage festival. Unfortunately, they, they had poor weather Saturday, so they had to bring it inside, but they had some one hundred and fifty displays about what life was like one hundred and fifty years ago. That just happened this past weekend. And then the DeMarva Shorebirds on August the twenty-fourth, they're going to do a dollar fifty night for the upper level seats to celebrate the one fifty. So that'll be a neat opportunity for folks to come out. Last but not least, this is one of my personal favorites. When we went to all the different town, town meetings and municipality meetings, one of the things that folks consistently brought up was this concept at the hundred celebration fifty years ago, what, which was called Brothers of the Brush. This was a facial hair growing contest. Some of you may have been around for that and remember that, but consistently people have referred to that. So what we would like to do is So what we would like to do is to bring that back, and we're going to have our own version of the Brothers of the Brush. You can go to the next slide. These are some pictures from 50 years ago, the contest winners, and you can go to the next slide if you would. In this picture, this is the county council president at the time, Mr. Richard Wooton. Mr. Henry Parker's also in that picture, and we had those folks just participate in that and to grow facial hair. So I was hoping to get some elected officials involved with this, a round number, I was hoping for seven, but we would love for you all if.
You left out one.
I'm sorry.
You left out one.
Yeah, I see this side of the table is already on your way.
There's actually eight.
Nine, if you want to include the sheriff. All right. We'll take as many as want. But in this case, they did a proclamation urging citizens to participate, and if any of you would want to participate, we'd love to have you be part of that. But the idea is to just engage people and to have some fun and to really bring awareness to the 150, and to whatever extent you'd like to participate, we'd love to have you be part of that. We are going to kick off that contest on June the 3rd. It's at the downtown Salisbury Festival at 7 o'clock on the main stage. We have got a barber, and we've got the whole thing set up where we're going to officially kick off that contest, so if you'd like to be involved, please let us know. And then my last comment is we have decals, window decals that we're giving out for free in the community to businesses and any folks that want to put it on their vehicles. I've given some to Ms. Hurley, and then also a postcard, which has the 150 logo, but then also on the back, the events that I just highlighted here, which I've given a stack to Ms. Hurley, and we'll, we have a lot of those available, which we'll distribute. So those are the things that we've got planned. We're excited, and we think it's going to be a lot of fun. Be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Any questions for? Steve, I tried the beard about two weeks ago. I'm not kidding, I really did. I went in an entire week.
Did you?
Yeah. I used to have a beard, actually.
Did you?
Yeah. It doesn't look the same anymore.
So on the June 3rd, does everybody start from scratch?
Well, there's, there's six categories.
I was trying to get a head start here.
Yeah, there's six categories, and, Mr. President, this may alleviate your concerns, but we have six categories, one of which is the fastest-growing beard. So for the fastest-growing on June the 3rd, those folks will start clean, we'll have to verify it, and then on September 15th, at the third Friday, we will have official judges, and if you want to even participate in that, we'd love to have you. So those folks will have about three months, and it'll be fastest-growing. For those that don't want to start clean, we've got five other categories, and one of which is the worst beard for folks that have struggled to grow facial hair. We've included, we don't want to be exclusive to anybody, so we've included those folks. So the worse your beard, the better, so everyone can participate.
Do you have a white hair contest? Wayne and I could get in.
Yeah, we can, we can make arrangements for that. So.
One question. I was down at the, you know, Maradella Springs over the weekend, I noticed they had some stuff. I know some other towns have events throughout the year, and I know Maradella has something on July 4th. Again, I was talking to some folks there, and, you know, they said, you know, if the county wants to, you know, do anything at those events, and I'm sure other towns have the stuff throughout, you know, the rest of the year, but I know Maradella Springs talked about it specifically, you know, anything from the county there to participate in their, like, July 4th event or anything like that, they would be more than happy to, you know, continuing to work with you to promote this and do things like that.
Yeah, that'd be fantastic, yeah. These two weekends are the ones we're planning, but there are other spinoff events, which, you know, as many times as we can celebrate those, that'd be fantastic. I know SWAC, they're turning 50 this year, they've talked about doing something that would also promote the 150, so we'd be willing to work with anybody to celebrate this event.
And I know you do a great job of sponsorships. I would think that maybe if, through the, through the assistance with the chamber, there could be a lot of businesses that may want to sponsor parts or any of these events at all. It's great recognition for them, it's good branding for any local companies.
Yeah.
So it may be something to consider as well.
Okay. Very good. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Steve, appreciate it.
Thank you, Steve.
This time I'd like to entertain a motion from council to adjourn so we can go into closed session.
So moved.
Second.
We're not going to have a council budget session?
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed it. I skipped. Night, thank you very much, Mark. Council budget session's the next item here. Pull this up here. I guess the first thing would be if there's any items on the, in the council's particular budget that anybody would like to amend.
Well, I see we had a car put into our budget. I don't know, do we need a new car? I mean, that's not something you would have requested.
Well, you might want to ask council president.
It looked broke down.
He was the one that had to be rescued in Easton one day.
We've heard about that, we've heard about that, so.
Yeah, I was thinking that, I mean, I was, I was really thinking when I.
When you're sitting outside the road?
When I said something. It wasn't that long ago when we took a trip to Annapolis and came back in the, I think it was probably the same car with a, with a duct tape on the, on the fuel line, that with the cars that were retired, because I know we retired several vehicles from, I don't know whether they were department heads or whatever, but initially, we did retire a few vehicles. I thought there may be vehicles out there, a newer vehicle at our disposal. That was what that primary conversation was.
Well, the pool cars that you see out there now, the problem with that is saying that's a council car, and you're welcome to, this is any department just to take them.
Right.
If they're available, but we've cut back on so many of the cars that were, we did not replace those.
Yeah.
And we're letting everybody use these. The mail car, that's a different thing, too, where, you know, we're having trouble with. One of those Crown Vics, we had a new transmission, which was 2,700. The car's not worth $2,700, so.
Yeah, and to clarify, too, we weren't really looking for a new car or a council car. I was just saying, when we go to Annapolis, can we get another one? Was there something better on the lot? Because we don't use it that often, we only use it for Mago.
We'd have to figure it into the account of how many we're going to get. If you want one of the older ones and put the new ones towards the other departments, that's fine, too. It's just, you know, we're just trying to get some of these pals or something like that that aren't possible, can be traded in a couple of years and retain some value. We have, we have 25 cars, $398.
Oh, yeah.
What year's this car? What year's car we have, man?
Seventies.
We have an '05.
We have an '05.
'05.
'04.
How many times? It broke down once.
Oh, yeah.
It broke down twice.
Just once, maybe once or twice.
On us.
Don't get me wrong, I don't want a new car or anything like that. I just thought, hey, if there's something else on the lot that's a little better than this one, maybe we can borrow that.
I don't usually trade until the doors are falling off.
Well, I mean, I mean, that was, I guess, you know, I think I drove that car once to go to Annapolis, and I wondered how many times it gets used.
That nuts.
And, you know, being able to share with the rest of, you know, the county, you know, and again, that's more of your guys' management of the fleet, that, you know, we're kind of, you know, we're off to the side here because we don't really drive that much.
We've got a couple of skid trucks left over, John.
As long as they get to Annapolis, but, I mean, the car's mainly driven to Annapolis, though, isn't it? Is that, is that where?
That's primarily, that's it. That's it.
Would it be cheaper just to pay mileage, just for that one trip? I mean, I don't know how often.
Hey, we can use the car we have. We really can use that car. It was just, it's just a very innocent comment that, hey, is there any, are there any better cars on the lot? If there aren't, there aren't, I'm okay.
It'd be less expensive to rent a car.
But I'm just saying, if one breaks down, there may not be a pool car available.
The sheriff allows Maro Zamora.
No, I mean, I mean, it's not the greatest car in the world. I mean, I drove to Annapolis once, and I decided the next time I was just going to drive my own car. I wasn't, you know, going to bother, because, I mean, it's not a good driving car, so I'm not.
Right, and a lot of things don't work on it.
But, you know, again, cheaper options for us to consider in terms of either mileage, reimbursement, or borrowing stuff, or, you know, if we can cooperate with the rest of the county, you know, the rest of the county fleet.
So you were, you were suggesting initially, Mark, when you opened this discussion, that you wanted to remove that item?
Well, I'm, again, I wanted to talk to people who drive it more than I, you know.
I'm quite, I'm very much okay with removing that item. We appreciate it, but.
I guess on these other, on these other budgetary items in the council's budget, what did we use of everything that was budgeted last year? I mean, did we use all the money that was budgeted to us last year?
No, we did not. No.
So.
Well, we reduced.
It seems to, in the history, and what I've been seeing over the years, we very seldom use all the money that was budgeted to us, so I guess my thoughts are, why, why do we keep putting a lot of that money in? Now, I know we always like to have a little bit of buffer there, but.
Well, we reduced the contractual services, you know that. And we sort of anticipated we weren't going to use all of that either, but it was just a, we wanted to create that, a buffer in case it was necessary. So we didn't use that, so we've eliminated half of that. I guess the question is, if you see anything in here that you think maybe is exorbitant, what would you like to strike?
Well, I guess I'd rely on Laura to tell us what we have used, close to the maximum of what we have.
If you look at your next year budget levels report, you'll see that there's a fiscal year 17 column, and then you'll see the 2018 department column. You'll see for like the copy equipment, we kept that the same. Maintenance and repairs, we kept the same.
Well, apparently, apparently in my budget, that's not there.
In your budget book?
Yeah, I'm trying to find it.
It's called the next year budget levels report.
I think you're looking at the detail. We're going to go back.
Where do I need to be?
It's the last, last couple pages.
Okay.
Okay, so looking at the line items that we did decrease, the telephone landline in fiscal year 17, we budgeted $1,180. In fiscal year 18, we budgeted $950. Cell phones, we kept the same. Fuel expense, I mean, as President Cannon mentioned, we only drive that vehicle to Mago primarily, so we reduced the fuel expense from 500 to 350. Vehicle maintenance, we did keep the same. Local travel, we bumped that down to 1,200, whereas fiscal year 17, it was 1,500. Seminars and conferences, we kept the same. Video streaming, that's for the council meetings to be put on the county's website, and it was decided not to continue that service. So we did not budget for that at all in fiscal year 18. Contractual services, as President Cannon mentioned, we took that down from $140,000 to $70,000. Code maintenance, there was some discussion on that, whether or not we should even keep that in the council's office budget, but it's in there for $8,000 at the current time.
How much of it did we use?
Code maintenance, I think the last invoice was about maybe $7,000. It was pretty close to the $8,000.
$7,000? But the question was whether or not it should be in the council's budget, or the executive's budget, or someone else's budget, or the law department's budget, isn't that correct?
Correct, yes. That was a question.
I think it was supposed, wasn't it the thought that it should be in the legal, in the law budget?
That is correct, yes, yes. Legal actually sends the legislation to the publishers, so that's why I think the discussion was, should they actually pay that expense since they're the ones doing the work?
I believe that suggestion was not accepted, though.
That is correct.
So it has to get paid for, that's one way or the other.
Well, if we're evaluating what the true legal expenses are in the county, we ought to know what the, I mean, the public needs to know what the true legal expenses are in the county. Sorry, Mark, I didn't mean to.
No, I'm just, I agree, but it's got to be paid for.
You've got to leave it there for now.
Yeah.
Well, you could cut it and recommend that it be, be transferred to the law department.
Let's see that as a future discussion.
How about council expenses? How much of that did you use?
I don't think we've wrapped up this code maintenance. What do you, what do you all want to do?
I mean, it's got to get paid for, so.
It don't matter.
Yeah.
I'd say keep it in there for now and then discuss it later.
I mean, this is.
This is later.
There's no later, Larry.
Yes, there is.
Later now. I mean, that, that's probably something to discuss with the county attorney. I mean, I mean, again, this, this is the wider direction that we've talked about before, about us figuring out about codifying legislation. This is part of that wider discussion that we've never really come to resolution on. It's a remnant of the council-only form of government, and, you know, it's, you know, who codifies the law, who does what, you know, who pays for, you know, this sort of thing. It's all kind of, again, that was part of the thing a few months ago when we were talking about, that, I don't know if, you know, has ever really been resolved or even worked on again, so.
How do we, how are we doing it now specifically, when it has to be done?
Well, the legal department, Mr. Wilber's office actually sends that legislation to General Code. The invoice comes in to Mr. Strasburg, who then passes it on to council, and we process that invoice for payment.
So we're, we're paying the law department for the, for the codification?
We're paying the invoice directly for General Code.
Right.
We're not paying the law office directly, no.
We're paying?
We're paying the invoice that is presented by General Code, who are the publishers of the county code.
And they're, they're issuing that to our law department?
No, they issue the invoice to the executive's office or to the county.
We assume it's legislative, the money's in the budget to pay for it out of your budget, but not you all are legislated by it.
Well, that's why I'm asking exactly what does it entail? Is it, I don't know. I don't know where the work is actually done. You're saying it's contracted out?
Yes. General Code is the publishers of the county code. They actually review the legislation that's presented to them, they do proofreading, they do formatting changes, and then they do the distribution. Each year, there's a supplement that is released. They have a distribution list, and the supplement goes to those individuals. By law, there are certain agencies, state agencies, that are required to get that supplement.
Okay.
And it's online as well.
The county code is online.
I mean, we can't, the thing is, we can't move stuff around in the budget. I mean, so, again, it would be nice to have this codification issue and all that sort of stuff about who does what settled by next year, and hopefully, maybe then this money can be shifted next year, you know, when the budget's presented to us, so.
Well, I'm just, the floor's open to anybody, so.
Yeah.
It sounds to me like we're going to keep it in right now. I haven't heard any, any other complaints. Okay, good. Joe, you were, were you bringing up something else?
No.
Good. I thought we had moved on, someone was.
We, we, yeah, well, I was going to bring up council expenses.
Okay.
How much of that did we use?
I don't have that exact dollar figure in front of me, so I'm not certain. I mean, that line item is used, council expenses is used for like your hotel reservations for like a conference.
I thought that would be in meetings and seminars.
The meetings and seminars is, or the registration cost for a seminar.
I got you.
How much of that did we use?
Again, I didn't break those figures in front of me, sorry.
Is it close to what you have here? Because it looks like you've done it for year after year, so I would assume it would be.
What I would say is, why don't we look at that $1,1500 and the $8,500? If you want to review that, Laura, give you time instead of trying to come to some conclusion now, and maybe you can email the council as to what those costs, those real costs were.
I can do that.
All right, and whatever, if you feel there's a buffer, maybe why?
Okay.
Okay?
Yes.
Okay?
Okay.
Any other?
So we've cut the car.
Cut the car.
Cut the car. Cut 60, 70, 80, $6,000 otherwise, is that right? Is that my reading that right?
Excuse me?
From 226 to 140, is that right? Operating expenses.
Previously.
Yeah, it's previously.
I'll let you do that math.
Yeah.
Yeah, originally, we were 226 last year, we're 140 this year, yes. Operating expenses, yes, there has been a reduction there. Any other questions or suggestions? Okay. Anything else? All right. Now, I guess we can entertain a motion to adjourn so we can go into closed session?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.